Will everyone please rise for the invocation to be delivered by Pastor Dix?
May we bow our heads. I pray for the agenda set before the officers and members of the legislators this evening. Bless this meeting and give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved county. We pray that you will continue to bless and grant the wisdom and courage to know and do what is right with character and conviction, as we listen with understanding and speak with clarity and restraint. Guide us toward the best way to take action to accomplish our goals and continue to bless and renew us with the strength and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We access in your sons and daughters' names, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Dix. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by legislator Vellano.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the color over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to recognize legislator Fields, who is going to come into the well and introduce some very special guests we have with us this evening. Legislator Fields.
Good evening, everyone. So we'll have this evening pundit Rishi Sharma and all of those that came here this evening to come up and give us a little understanding of this Diwali, which is an Indian religious celebration. And so we'll have just a few minutes of an explanation and a quick dance presentation so we can get an understanding. So this is the first of many that will take place here this month. And Schenectady County is starting its first and then it'll continue, I think, tomorrow night and other places throughout the city.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fields, and thank you. Good evening, everyone. Sitaram. Before I go into explaining, can I do a minute's of prayers? Om vakratunda mahakaya saryakoti sama prabha nirvignam kurme deva shubhakaeshu sarvada. Om namastastu mahamai shri pitesur pujeetshankachakra hasti mahalakshmi namastude. Om shanti, shanti, shanti hari om. Shanti, shanti, shanti. Peace, peace, peace. Deepavali for Hindus, Deepavali translated literally means rose of light. Deepavali is a celebration where the Hindus celebrate the festival of light. We are asked, what do we see with our eyes or vision? And then without light, we cannot see. So Deepavali is a time where Hindus celebrate this occasion where in the Hindu tradition and faith and belief, we worship God in both masculine and feminine aspect. And Ma Lakshmi or Mother Lakshmi is the goddess in which we worship during this period of time. It's five days of celebration. But a day in which we want to highlight this evening is Deepavali. And Deepavali is where we give thanks to the God and the goddesses because it's the ending, as nature itself, winter is stepping in, autumn is here, so nature goes to sleep. So Deepavali is where after the farmers would reap their crops, they will store the grains for the winter. And so in doing this, they will give thanks to God and Bhagwan or the Almighty. There is also where a story of where the Lord Ram once was expelled to burn or to forest because of the commandment of his father. And as a dutiful son, he would have went into exile for 14 years. This would have completed and on his return back to the city of Ayodhya, then the devotees and those at that time would light little lamps in the pathway in which he will return to this kingdom so he can see his way to his kingdom. Signifying and on from over 5,000 years ago to present, that tradition is upheld and upkeep. Basically, all four prayers came from India to the West Indies, Guyana, where I am from, and some devotee here. And so our four prayers brought this culture to the Caribbean. Caribbean, we, our generation, our parents wanted a greener pasture for our family. We migrated to North America, mostly settling queens. But as it keep, the population keep growing in Queens, there were other avenue and places to live. We have chosen to come to Schenectady. Coming to Schenectady, also we have brought this culture, this identity, this worship, this festival with us. And so today, on the 23rd of this month, on the Monday, is this day, Deepavali. And it's the day in which we celebrate with our family, our friends, our loved ones, our neighbors and everyone, giving thanks to God. And so we pray for health, strength, happiness, peace, prosperity, progress, and all the virtuous things you can think about. Light is the triumph of over darkness. And so we pray that also in this spirit of Deepavali, whatever darkness we may face, either physically, mentally, psychologically, may light remove this darkness because the moment light is shined, darkness shuttered. So Deepavali is where we pray and we ask this Bhagwan and this God, that may you remove this darkness and may light always be in our life, not only for ourselves but for all our loving brothers and sisters and friends. Because you recognize Anshaji and Havinashi, meaning God is not only in my, myself or my religion or my faith, but God is in everyone because we know God purpose to make man out of His image. So we pray not only for ourselves, but we pray for the welfare and the well-being of everyone. Om shanti, shanti, shanti. Thank you and Shubh Deepavali to all of you.
Hello, Sitaram. Good afternoon. Tonight, I didn't really prep anything tonight to say. It was kind of last minute brought up to come here. But tonight, me and Raj, my godbrother, we are going to be playing Hindu Indian instruments. This is the harmonium. It's a key, it's a reed instrument. It's basically like a piano. That's dolok. It's a percussion drum. And tonight, we will be playing two Lakshmi bhajans, just instrumental, no singing. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. How about a nice round of applause for joining us this evening?
Jo Bhi Tere Bahar Pe Aaye, Kani Hati Na Vaapas Jaye. Har Ichcha Puri Ho Jaye, Jo Bhi Mangi Sab Kuch Paaye Ma Santoshii Ma. Nirghal Ho To Dham Mil Jaye, Pyata Ho To Jal Mil Jaye. Ab Naon Ko Bar Mil Jaye, Suni Ko Khari Ho Jaye Ma Santoshii Ma. Hum Sab Kuch Ko Shish Na Aaye, Hum Sab Tere Sharan Mein Aaye. Ambhaki Ke Deep Dil Aaye, Pal Pal Gars Tere Gulghaye. Tu Amma Hai, Jagd Amma Hai, Santoshii Santosh Ki Devi Ma, Santoshii Ma. Ma Santoshii Ma Jay Ma, Tere Sharan Rahon Mein Sada. Swikaar Tu Ne Mera Vrat Kiya, Swikaar Tu Ne Mera Vrat Kiya. Khushi Mein Aaj Chal Mera Bhaar Diya, Mera Bhaar Diya. Jo Ma Us Se Jyada Diya, Ma Santoshii Ma Jay Ma. Ma Santoshii Ma.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'd like to invite Legislator Frizzoni into the well with Deputy Fire Coordinator Ken Almy and the representatives of the various fire companies who are with us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If all the fire companies' representatives will come up, please. Thank you. Welcome. Since 2019, the legislature has awarded grants to local fire departments in Schenectady County. This year, nine of the departments in the county submitted funding requests. These are items, budget items, that help local departments enhance their capabilities to respond to the impact and magnitude of unusual storms, natural disasters, and everyday responses, because those tax their resources. And volunteer fire departments provide vital services that our communities rely on every day, especially in the suburban and rural communities. These are all volunteer. Tonight, we have one paid hybrid volunteer agency, but all of these agencies are here every day responding to fires in our communities and also medical calls and whatever else the community asks of them to do. So this year is our fourth year doing this, and we have now surpassed the $200,000 mark with giving out these funds. And for this year, we've given out over $53,000 to these fire departments. The funding will be used to purchase different pieces of equipment like vehicle stabilization equipment, water and wildland rescue and equipment and gear, ventilation fans, AED, thermal imaging cameras, and a boat motor for one of the fireboats. So the fire departments provide a great service to our residents, and we're very happy to be able to give them this funding. And it is especially important this week because this is National Fire Prevention Week, so it's a perfect time to give these funds to the departments. So we will... Ken Almy will help me. Glenville Hill Fire District Chief. Thank you very much for what you do. Mariahville Fire Department. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. West Glenville Fire Department. Thank you. Scotia Fire Department. Thank you. And the Outplus Fire Department. Thank you. The other departments that could not be here tonight are the Buchindale Fire Department, Platterkill, Shauna Wee, and the South Schenectady Fire Department. So we're very glad once again to be able to give these funds to these departments for what they do for our communities every day. A lot of times, a lot of the community doesn't pay attention to what they do, but they're out there every day and responding, for the most part, as volunteers in the middle of the night, even with full-time jobs. So whatever the legislature can do to help them, we're certainly doing what we can. So we appreciate their support, and we try to give your support back to you. So we... Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Legislator or County Manager Flumet to join me in the wall for our next set of presentations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir, for inviting me up here tonight. Tonight, kind of an extension of our very popular employee recognition program. This month, we're recognizing our probation department. As our old Director of Probation once chided me, these good individuals are not state parole officers. These are your county probation officers. Typically, they're not. I have met this bunch. Typically, they're not shy at all. I'm going to hand it to Tim just for a couple brief remarks. But again, this is your county probation department. We have representatives here from anywhere from 37 years all the way up to 25 years. These are our folks that work so hard because of all our pre-trial releases. These people are put into the community. It's these good folks that help supervise those folks. These are the folks that are working on expansion of GPS monitoring, our cognitive behavioral interventions, all supported by empirical work. These are the people on the front line for community justice, and they're our county employees. Tim?
First, I'd like to thank the legislators and Rory for acknowledging us and honoring us. And I was fortunate enough with everyone here that we all chose probation as a job. And obviously, we're all standing here, and there's six people that weren't able to make it. And this job that we chose like a long time ago turned into meaningful careers for all of us. It's really... First, we'd like to acknowledge Linay Wilson, who still says she's 29 years old. However, she's worked at the probation department for 36 years and 11 months. And she's a senior field intelligence officer, so she deals with warrants, absconders, and the gun-involved violence elimination grant. Next, I'd like to introduce Linda McDonough, who's been here 34 years. And Linda is in charge of setting up investigations and violations of probation, among other things. Next, I'd like to introduce Beth Ricky Hathaway, who's been here 32 years, 10 months, and she's a senior court officer. Next is Patty McNamara, who's been here 31 years, 11 months, and she just got promoted to supervisor about five months ago, and she supervises the investigation unit. Then I would like to introduce Kevin Paulsley, who's been here 29 years, who is an adult supervisor, and he supervises a mental health caseload, high-risk caseload. And his father used to be the director three directors ago. Next, Marina Partey, who's been here 26 years, 11 months. She likes to remind us if she didn't have a couple kids, she'd be here a lot longer. And she is the Raise the Age Officer. Then John Simmons, who's been here 25 years, four months. He just made the cut. And he's a senior who monitors sex offenders. And then just a quick shout out for the six people that weren't here. Amy Graham, Alan Roloff, James Wolfe, Dana Gannon, Mark Silvestri, and Eric Lynn. And I also have been here 32 years and one month.
Final round of applause. Thank you, everyone. Thank you all for your dedicated service. We also have one additional ceremonial resolution on the agenda this evening. It's a resolution proclaiming October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. That resolution will be presented at a later date. At this time, I'd like to call toward this evening's public hearing regarding the proposed 2023 operating budget and the proposed 2023 to 2028 capital budget. Clerk, please take the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Present.
Mr. Russo.
Present.
Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill. Mr. Constance Hine is absent. Ms. Gata.
Here.
Mr. Frizzoni.
Here.
Mr. Cuomo.
Here.
Mr. Paterni.
Present.
Ms. Osvaldo.
Here.
Ms. Solano.
Here.
Mr. Hess is absent. Mr. Hughes is excused. Mr. McDonald.
Here.
Mr. Jazinski.
Present.
Eleven present, two absent, two excused.
Thank you. Clerk, read the notice of this evening's first public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that Schenectady County Legislature will meet in legislative chambers in the Schenectady County Office Building, 620 State Street, Schenectady, New York, at 7:00 p.m. on October 11, 2022, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the tentative operating budget of the said county for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2023, and further for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the capital improvement program for the county of Schenectady for the years 2023 through 2028.
Thank you. Any members of the public who would like to address this public hearing, please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record in order to comment on the budget public hearing.
Is there a privilege of the floor, lady?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ottavio Piccolo. I'm a retired public school teacher and U.S. veteran. A retired U.S. veteran. I'm originally from Italy, but I've lived in America for 48 years and the city of Schenectady since 1987. My children, my two children were born here, so this city and county is very important to me. I'm here to speak to you about five topics. The first topic is I want to congratulate you on your 2023 proposed budget. I was reading the Schenectady Gazette today, and this is what they... These are some of the good things that they said about this budget. According to today's Gazette, that this 2023 budget would increase spending by $35 million with an additional increase to the property tax rate. It would provide a total of $12.4 million surplus in reserve funds, which will be used to balance the budget. Additionally, it will invest $18.5 million in transportation spending that includes 60 miles of preventive maintenance and 20 miles of surface treatment. Also, this budget will have $37 millions in capital projects and equipment and $5.8 million in engineering and public works for county highway improvements. Third topic: Solutions by the City Council so far regarding litter. I came here in 2018 or 2019, just before the pandemic, and I talked about this problem, plastic waste in our county, in our city. And I have talked to the City Council many times about this. Here is what the Schenectady Gazette said about their solutions so far. "A group of city lawmakers introduced a plan seeking to crack down on litter." "City Council members John Polimani, Carmel Patrick, and Dorinda Toro introduced 'It Starts With Me,'" "an anti-litter action plan, a four-pronged strategy that aims to improve the quality of life by reducing the amount of trash strewn along city streets." Let me present to you just five major points that the Schenectady listed. Number one: The 10-page plan lays out a series of steps the city can take to reduce littering across four areas of focus: education and outreach, infrastructure, community partnership, and laws and enforcement. Number two: Councilman Polimani said that the impacts of littering go beyond environmental impacts and can reduce property value and even stunt economic development. "The city," he noted, "also spends thousands each year to clean up improperly disposed trash." Number three: Neighborhood groups for years have hosted cleanup events, but littering and illegal dumping has remained an issue throughout the city. Number four: Lawmakers sought to tackle the issue in 2017 by streamlining the process for issuing offenders an appearance citation for a future court date. The law, however, was never implemented to issues with the ticketing process. And number five: However, lawmakers have yet to adopt any legislation or submit any legislative proposals. The hope is to collect additional input from residents. Topic number four: In 2021, Schenectady received $53 million in COVID federal ARPA funds to help in revitalizing our city's economy. City officials have only allocated $14.6 million and haven't yet agreed how to spend the remaining $38.4 million, money that could be lost unless properly invested. These funds must be returned to the feds by the end of 2024. This is therefore a great opportunity for city officials not to miss it. And topic number five: It is for this reason I have started a petition in order to raise public awareness and support so that we can convince our city leaders that the time to finally solve these problems has arrived. This petition, which is online, lists areas that need to be improved, solutions, projects, and ordinances that could solve these persistent problems. The title of my petition is "Fix and Mix Schenectady Clean and Sustainable." So I kindly ask you to read and sign the online one, which has more details and information. I have copies of this information with the link for the petition. You can go online and sign it, and also you can sign the paper one. I plan to present the signatures to the City Council by the end of the year, hopefully before Christmas. Thank you for listening. And if you want, I could give you copies of this. Would you like to have these copies to sign the petition?
You can leave them with the staff right here by the door. Just for clarification, this is the budget public hearing, and I want you to comment on the budget. Privileges of the floor will be shortly. Anyone wishing to comment on the public hearing? Anyone wishing to comment on the public hearing?
My name is Diablo. I live in the city of Schenectady. I'm a street artist. My comment is related a little bit about the budget. Is that okay? The reason I'm a street artist is because there is no county or city place for me to show my artwork. Today, I read the Delhi Gazette summary on the spending of the county budget, and I don't know in which item is the money to support local artists, people like me, that we don't have other revenue, but just... we don't have other revenue but just making art. I once came here and I asked, or I said that Ray Gillen wants to change the name of the street where the museum is located because there is no attendance. So my advice to Ray Gillen was to use his power to convince the Galut family so they can open the doors for art, paint art. And in Schenectady, when people say art, they are talking about music, dance, theater, even cooking, but not art, paint, paint art. And I wanted to propose to the county, like the man just referred, that there is hundreds and thousands and millions and dollars that probably the city had to be returning to the county because they don't have any ideas. According to the delegate said, they don't have any ideas where to spend their money. I've been in the city 20 years. And before that, about another 10 years, the county wants to tear down this building and do something else because it's claustrophobic. It's ugly. But so far, all of these bright minds, they can get together to do something. I don't know if the county is allowed it to construct things, you know? That's something I don't know. But my proposal is that to use some of this money to construct a modern museum of art for modern art, because we don't have that in here. And as long as the county remain close to art, we local artists, we gonna suffer. We don't sell. We don't have revenues. There is something else I wanted to say. I'm sorry, I forget. But I'm sorry. Oh, yes, I remember now. There is an example about how art can create revenues, lots of revenues. Take, for example, this Schenectady Armory, the Ban Ho Show. It has been for four months. And if you go to the parking lot and see the plates of the carts parked over there, you will see from how far people are coming to see this art show. I see plates from Vermont, Maine, Massachusetts. So there is the importance to open up a museum of art. I wrote a letter to Mrs., I don't know if I'm gonna pronounce her right, Kathy Gita, about why the county is spending all this amount of monies for the summer, for the Schenectady summer, the festival on the summer. And I proposed her to open up also an art show for the local artists to be exhibited. But I didn't receive any answer for that. So I wanted to say, I'll tell you again, to propose, to make a serious proposal to use some of these monies from the rescue plan money and construct a modern museum of art for modern and contemporary art. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to comment during the public hearing? Anyone wishing to comment during the public hearing? Anyone wishing to comment during the public hearing? Seeing no further comments, public hearing is now closed. We will now move to our legislative conference and the Rules Committee to be chaired by legislator Fields.
Rules committee has now come to order. Our first item is a Resolution Number 72, a resolution proclaiming October 2022 as Breast Counter Awareness Month.
Report.
Report. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution has been moved. Resolution Number 73, a resolution to create and eliminate certain positions at the office of the Schenectady County Attorney's Office.
Yes, so our district attorney, Bob Carney, has an identified candidate as an attorney to come into his office. The person is experienced, just not experienced enough for the district attorney five that he has a budgeted space available to. So he's willing to trade a five for a budgeted two, which is a lower-level experienced position. It fills his needs, and it'll save the county $16,000.
Move to report.
Move to report. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this item has been moved. Our next item is Resolution Number 74, a resolution to enter into multi-year agreement and accept monies for the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services regarding the delinquency prevention program. And where we'll have Arthur Butler, who is the executive director of the Human Rights Commission, will come up front here and actually give us a brief explanation to this particular grant that we're receiving.
Thank you. As you see in your agendas, is our memo, in our office memo, that gives some of the highlights of this position. This was part of a, a three-part training that we participated with the Schenectady County Probation Office and also with other probation offices, Albany and Rensselaer. And in our conversations and development through this process, we thought that it was important for us to bring a position that was formerly at the Schenectady County Probation Office as a family advocate. And the family advocate, as you see, would act as a mentor. Mentor was a word that came up often in our conversations in the development, and how that mentor would work to support Schenectady County families and provide these families a valuable link and a resource of information on legal advocacy and other community-based supports to help in moving our, our youth through our diversion programs. So in our why it's important, we say that it strengthens community-level responses, more effectively addresses key concerns, experience, and needs of those most marginalized in the county. And our expectations is that this position will build important linkages that will help to support the development and sustainability and build long-term partnerships, both collaborative and also through constructive dialogue among legal systems, schools, and other major stakeholders throughout Schenectady County. And again, to promote legal education as it relates to the rights of juveniles and to establish relationships with legal aid societies, create an open dialogue. Important to build that framework of dialogue to strengthen our communities and foster healthy relationships between legal and our county residents. And so to that, we were awarded $50,000 over the next two years that would end, end 2024, and that we would create that family advocate position and work with existing organizations, possibly through Schenectady County, to act as those advocates to help in our efforts here. So we're excited about the $50,000. We're excited about the work that, and the partnerships that can be built from the monies. It's a first of, of what we expect to bring more money through the Human Rights Commission in a very different way than you have seen in the past, and to build and strengthen those relationships throughout the county.
Anyone have any questions? Yes, Ms. Ostrich.
I'm just curious if you have any idea how many kids will be coming through the program? Is there a thought on that?
Not off the top, but we, we worked really hard with Tim and the folks at probation and know that there was a need for this. I mean, we do suggest that the advocate position will work with the diversion program that comes through that, that could help keep, keep these children, youth out of the legal system, so.
Okay.
And it'll be, we'll also, we'd like this to serve as a pilot so that we can, in fact, find, gather information, get those statistics so that when we come back before you, then we can have some hard numbers for you to, to look at the work that we've done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? May I have a motion? Move to report. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolutions are moved. Item Number 75, a resolution to amend the 2022 capital improvement program and operating budget to provide funding for renovations to the loading dock at the county office building.
So this is a, a bid that went out for purchase. We only had one bid that actually met the budgeted level. Unfortunately, this one vendor was on the OGS Do Not Do Business With, so the next vendor down came over at $104,000. So I'm here to ask for a capital amendment so that we can get this project done. The vendor is willing to go this month, just as long as we can have the extra money allotted to the project. And again, this is our, our back dock. This is primarily where our employees enter, where we receive deliveries. If anybody's been back there, it's just, it hasn't been in good shape for years.
May I have a motion? If there's any questions, I'm sorry. What's a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution's been moved. Item Number 76, a resolution to authorizing the county manager enter agreement, or enter into a multi-year agreement with St. Peter's Health Partners for Laboratory Services at the Glendale Nursing Home. And Todd Z.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a routine contract for laboratory services, to provide laboratory services for the residents at Glendale. So we're here tonight because it's a multi-year contract. I'd like to sign a three-year contract. Our last contract was signed in 2020, so really, we're updating it. And we did look at other alternatives, and when we looked at quality and price, this was still the route to go at this point in time.
Any questions in this extension?
It says that there's a 5% annual increase for, over the three years. Is that standard? That seems high to me, but I don't, I don't know.
It's, it is standard because in, over the past five years, the labs have taken cuts from Medicare, and they absorb those cuts during that timeframe. They were never passed on to the facilities, so they're building that in, I think, as a safety net. So certainly, it's something we can revisit if there are any drastic changes with Medicare fee schedules.
Thank you.
Are there any services that the St., that we have to go outside of the St. Peter's healthcare laboratory system for other lab services? Or will they, are they turnkey and they'll provide everything that the Glendale Nursing Home needs from a laboratory services vendor perspective?
At this time, we are going to be utilizing them exclusively. During COVID, there were additional labs used when there was a lot of COVID testing going on. We were using labs from outside the area, but now we're managing the testing with St. Peters.
Move to report.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution moved. Thank you very much, Don. Item Number 77, a resolution to enter into a multi-year agreement with the New York State Department of Health to accept monies for the children's and youth with special health care needs.
This is, this is a benefit from joining our Office of Community Mental Health Services under the umbrella of public health. Public health is where our children's early intervention services lands, services from zero to three and then three to five. This is extra an actual $69,000 a year from the state of New York for community mental health needs for kids of those ages. So this will help augment services that we deliver.
Any questions?
Move to report.
Move to report.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution's been moved. Resolution Number 78, a resolution to enter a multi-year agreement with the New York State Department of Health to accept monies for the Healthy Neighborhood Preventative Health Cornerstones Program.
So this is our, our large multi-year, multi-dollar contract from the state of New York to provide those extra services to many of our, our neighborhoods in need that may have folks who have high blood levels, who have higher incidences of, of hospitalization due to tobacco use and, and all those kind of societal deterrents. This is an extra $275,000 from the state of New York, and it's a multi-year contract. So I'm here today to ask, to re-sign this agreement for the additional monies.
Any questions? Move to report, Mr. McGill.
Second.
Second, Ms. Gata, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this resolution's been moved. Our last item this evening is Resolution Number 79, which is a resolution adopting a local law, Number C of 2022. And this primarily deals with Northeast Rush LLC, which deals with the land at a community college to play, I think, for athletic fields, for soccer, I think it is. Any questions in this particular local law?
Yeah, I have a quick question. The Rotterdam Town Board was wanting, because they, it's, the, the property is in Rotterdam, correct?
It's in the town of Rotterdam. It's in the section three of the, of the, of this. Thank you, yes.
How does it work tax-wise if the county owns the property?
So th, this is the soccer fields?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is, so this is a, a land owned by the county that's in trust with the state of New York for our community college. So it's, it's predominantly precluded already from taxation. But in saying that, it's, it's the community college's structure to be able to, quote, lease that land. So this soccer group is, is shown to be a very good community partner, and they want to come and invest in that spot. And, and I give them a lot of credit because, you know, it is close to the river. But the benefits of them investing in that spot will give our community college things like access to the facility, and, and our students will be able to go over there and play soccer or basketball, you know, whatever they can fit specifically in that build. So it's, it's a, it's a huge benefit for our community college on land that predominantly just goes not terribly used, you know? Sometimes they're out there, there's a very old track out there. I don't know if you've ever walked out there, a very old baseball field that's overgrown, but it's, it's kind of the doorstep to the bike path going towards Rotterdam.
The town won't see any of the revenue or taxes from that?
Well, they wouldn't before either. You know what I'm saying?
Okay.
It's tax exempt now.
Okay.
The main tax exempt.
Thank you.
Move to report.
Move to report. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution's been moved. With that, Mr. Chair, the Rules Committee has now come to an end.
Thank you, legislator Fields. It's now time to open up, privilege of the floor. Any members of the public present who wish to address the legislature, please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and try to keep your comments to three minutes. Actually, I think I have to take my glasses off. I'm getting old. My eyes are getting old as well. Members of Schenectady County Legislature, good evening. My name is Kurt Simone. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Capital Region Veterans Memorial Incorporated, also known as the Legacy Project here in Schenectady County. I am also the Senior Vice Commander of the Mayfair-Glenville VFW Post 4660 and the American Legion Post 1817, along with being a member of the U.S. Submarine Veterans, Inc. This is Mary Brant, Colonel, United States Air Force, retired, and President of the Capital Region's Veteran Memorial, Inc. As you're all aware, the Legacy Project is in its fifth year of organizing, planning, fundraising, and carrying out its plans to establish a veterans cafe, internet cafe, memorial, and museum that will also offer focused conduit to the veterans in the surrounding 11 counties of the Capitol District to desperately needed services. The Legacy Project shall be located in Glenville, Schenectady County, represented directly by five of you: Thomas Constantine, Kathy Gata, Michelle Osterlich, Sarah Mae Pratt, and Peter Frizoni. The Legacy Project will honor and support our veterans while bringing honor to Schenectady County. Unfortunately, we declined to respond to our official written communications to you. We sent out letters requesting Schenectady County support from each of our District Three representatives at the start of the year. Thomas Constantine, Kathy Gata, Michelle- representatives at the start of the year, Thomas Constantine, Kathy Gata, Michelle Osterlich, Sarah Mae Pratt, and Peter Frisone. We also sent the same letter to Legislative Chairman Anthony Jazinski to ensure every member of this legislature was aware of the Legacy Project and its mission, and to request your support. We provided you with an avenue to learn about and explore the Legacy Project at your leisure and schedule, and we specifically requested your support with a grant. Unfortunately, no one responded. We have applied for a grant through Congressman Taupo's office, but he did note that such projects really should be directed to New York State and you. Metroplex responded by stating that they do not consider such projects, even though, in our opinion, the Legacy Project is in the purpose arena and a geographic district of its mission statement. Our two New York State legislators are in full support, but that is two out of two-hundred-and-thirteen members. You are only fifteen, and the Legacy Project is in your county, and five of you represent Glenville and Scotia. We have, however, found one public supporter in the name of the people of Glenville and Scotia, as well as numerous private supporters you can review on our website. The Glenville Town Board has partnered up the Legacy Project to move us forward with the location. This partnership has allowed us to become more efficient, reduce our needs significantly to make our project and services available to the veterans of Schenectady County and the surrounding counties of the Capitol District. You recently announced providing much money to business entities from casino to nonprofits. On April ninth, you approved a one and a half million in American Rescue Plan Act funding to the Empire State Youth Orchestra in Scotia. I am familiar with this project as I voted to approve it as a member of the Glenville Planning and zoning commission. As a school teacher, I applaud this act. As a veteran, I ask, why is no curiosity and feedback regarding the Schenectady County Veterans Project? The war in Afghanistan and Iraq may be over, but the war rages on among the veterans as they continue to struggle in their adjustment to civilian life, often scarred physically and mentally by their service. I mentioned how the good people of Glenville have supported and allowed for improved efficiency with the Legacy Project. A grant from Schenectady County in an amount of eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand, that's fifty-seven percent of the grant that was given to ESOY, will bring the Legacy Project to fruition. The Legacy Project is worthy of more than just your attention, is worthy of your direct support. The Legacy Project will be a destination point here in Schenectady County that will serve and honor the veterans in the cap, in the surrounding Capitol District counties. But you do not need to look far for the needs of our own local veterans. A homeless veteran continues to live in a tent on Freemich Ridge Road. I received numerous phone calls at my home from this veteran because he is aware of our project and is in need. This veteran has asked two things from me, to get the county to turn over certified copies of his DD-214 and a place to live. I have communicated with the county Veterans Affairs Office several times, confirmed this individual is a veteran, and that the county is in possession of two DD-14s in the name of this veteran. Legislative Valana, Military Affairs and Veterans Chairperson, I understand homeless veterans, including this situation, is a complicated issue, but please try to resolve this one. The Legacy Project, once supported and completed, can play a significant role in connecting veterans with the services they need. Ladies and gentlemen of the, representing the District Three, at the start of this year, we ask that you explore the Legacy Project and its mission. We encourage and directly ask for your support. This is budget time for you. You can do a good thing here with a lasting positive impact on the Schenectady County community, of which veterans belong. We were ready to demonstrate the Legacy Project to you at your leisure. We now re-invite you to a meeting between you and the Board of Directors of the Capital Region Veterans Memorial, Inc., at a time that is convenient to you five as our direct representatives. We are military veterans, and as such, we are effective and efficient planners, organizers, and doers. Legislative Gata, unless you decline, we look to you to be the point person and arrange in such a meeting and presentation. Please contact President Mary Brant when you and your District Three legislative peers are ready to commit to and schedule a meeting. Meeting at the Glenville Senior Center with a site trip to the site location at the corner of Dutch Meadows and New York State Route 50 makes sense, or at either location, for that matter. Any member of the legislature is also very welcome to attend, learn, and support. The Board of Directors of the Capital Region Veterans Memorial, Inc., thank you for your attention, and we look forward to a meeting with you and earning your tangible support in the very near future. Thank you very much. Thank you. Anyone else wish you to comment during privilege of the floor?
Just get it down where you can hear me. Thank you very much on behalf of the board, giving us the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Like Kurt mentioned, I am retired Air Force, twenty-seven and a half years. My mission was five deployments to bring the wounded soldiers home. So this is very dear and dear to us, to get some services in, to help the other veterans out that are struggling. The sooner we can do it, the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish you to comment during privilege of the floor?
I'm Patricia Voras, and I still live in the city for over twenty-three years. I've been encouraged to stop saying PD. You're very well aware of all the decorating that's been done on Erie Boulevard, and to make it look really nice and all kinds of stuff. I was on that, I was having computer trouble, and I went there to find my two computer people. And lo and behold, the first one had gone to Clifton Park, and the second one was, had a sign on the door that they had relocated to Maxon Road, some kind of industrial park. And, oh, I can find my way to Maxon Road. So I went over that way, and there is an industrial park, but I felt like I had seen it before, like maybe in Albany. And I thought, hmm, I think this is rather redundant. And, and the, my computer people hadn't really opened yet, but they helped me. They are mostly corporate now, but eventually, in case somebody's car catches fire or something like that, they're going to need an auxiliary fire department and an EMT, and it's, it's going to grow. But that doesn't obfuscate the fact that, in my opinion, Metroplex is redundant. And if only one half of one percent of our, their take is a hundred and fifty million dollars, well, let's get it back. We're in a perfect position now. The people at Metroplex have really aged out. We'll need some of our money to pay their probation, or whatever you call it. And, but, the other people at Metroplex have funneled themselves into even more lucrative venues, and I don't have to go into that. In fact, Metroplex is no longer Metroplex. It was Metroplex, County IDA, City IDA, but now it's Land Bank Two, I believe. There's a person employed. Metroplex is very well endowed with Land Bank. So let's eradicate the whole thing, get the rent out of there, and send all these people onto their far greater journeys now. It's fairly nice to get, to be their age and find a really lucrative second life. So let's get rid of that thing. I spent three days in the hospital recently, and it was fun. I mean, I learned a lot because I talk too much, but it amazed me, and when people talk about homeland security, these people that come in every day with these gourmet meals and decorative bags and everything, they sail through there. They don't have to pay attention to any security. They don't have to obey emergency doors. They just walk right in, and I don't think that's very safe. And so I have something to say about that. Oh, dear. I don't want to, well, yeah, homeland security and all those things. I'm having difficult issues, and I'm going to have to take them up. I'll tell you, one thing was after hours, a couple of years ago, that a sheriff's deputy came up behind me and said, your license has expired, and you really need to do something about it. But it was after hours, so the next morning, I was at DMV and got my license. I was in Saratoga one day, doing what I do in Saratoga, and just ever-loving it. I was going to spend the whole day, and I come back and somebody's ticketing me because I don't have a license, it's expired. So boy, did I take off, and I got back before three o'clock closing time and got it. But you know what? I was told if I left my email address with them, they would get in touch with me. Cheap. They have my email address, no notice. Before, I used to get a notice in the mail. Everything came in, just, you know, come visit us and bring your checkbook. But I didn't even get an email from them, so, you know. Anything else, I, oh, I've got so much. But let's chew away with this Metroplex thing. It wasn't ever supposed to be designed to be a permanent thing. That's what we heard, but somehow it worked its way. So since, let's just save some money. Okay. I'll tell you where you can send mine. Thank you. Y'all have fun. Oh, and the first thing that goes is the agenda. Huh?
Thank you.
The city does it, too.
Anyone else wish you to comment during privilege of the floor? Anyone else wish you to comment during privilege of the floor? Anyone else wish you to comment during privilege of the floor? Seeing none, privilege of the floor is now closed. We thank you all for your comments, and now call toward the October meeting of the Schenectady County Legislature. With a quick, please take the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Present.
Mr. Russo. Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill. Mr. Constantine is absent. Ms. Gata.
Here.
Mr. Frisone.
Here.
Mr. Cuomo.
Here.
Mr. Paterno.
Present.
Ms. Ostrilich.
Here.
Ms. Valano.
Here.
Mr. Hess is absent. Mr. Hughes is excused. Mr. McDonald. Mr. Jazinski.
Present.
Eleven present, two absent, two excused.
Thank you. Members received copies of the minutes held, from the meetings held on September thirteenth and October third. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Your second? Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? Minutes are hereby adopted. The clerk will read the list of reports received.
We've received reports from the Commissioner of Finance, Department of Ways and Means, and County Clerk.
Thank you. Committee reports. Legislative Frisone reports from the Committee on Codes, Judiciary, and Consumer Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Codes, Judiciary, and Consumer Affairs met on October third, 2022, and reported to the Agenda Resolution 164.
Thank you, sir. Legislative Ostrilich reports with the Committee on Education and Libraries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Education and Libraries met on October third, 2022, and reported to the Agenda Resolution 163.
Thank you. And if you would, the Committee on Health, Housing, and Human Services.
Yes, thank you. The Committee on Health, Housing, and Human Services met on October third, 2022, and reported to the Agenda Resolutions 165 and 166.
Thank you. Legislative Russo reports from the Committee on Neighborhood Revitalization.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Neighborhood Revitalization met on October third, 2022, and reported to the Agenda Resolution 167.
Thank you, sir. Legislative Paterno reports from the Committee on Public Facilities, Transportation, and Infrastructure.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The Committee on Public Facilities, Transportation, and Infrastructure met on October third, 2022, and reported to the Agenda Resolution 168.
Thank you. Legislative Frisone with reports from the Committee on Public Safety and Firefighting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Public Safety and Firefighting met on October third, 2022, and reported to the Agenda Resolution 169.
Thank you, sir. Legislative Fields reports from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Rules met earlier this evening and reported to the Agenda Resolutions 156, 157, 158, 159, 160, 161, 162, and 171.
Thank you, sir. Also, the reports from the Committee on Ways and Means.
And the Committee on Ways and Means met on October third, 2022, reported to the Agenda Resolutions 165, 166, 168, and 170.
Thank you. First item this evening is Resolution 156-22, sponsors of the Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution proclaiming October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Any discussion? Seeing none, with a quick, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo. Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill.
I'd just, right. Breast cancer awareness is super meaningful to me. My grandmother beat breast cancer years ago. I went through it with her as far as radiation, so we have a survivor. I just want to publicly thank the county for the support of my family during our time. It wasn't breast cancer that got her, but it is important to us, and, you know, she did, she did get through that. So I just want to say thank you all for that and for this resolution. I will be voting aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Continue the roll.
Mr. Constantine is absent. Sorry. Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Frisone.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostrilich.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess is absent. Mr. Hughes is excused. Mr. McDonald. Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Eleven aye, two absent, two excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Next item is Resolution 157-22, sponsors of the Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution to create and eliminate certain positions at the office of the Schenectady County District Attorney.
Any discussion? Seeing none, with a quick, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill. Mr. Constantine is absent. Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Frisone.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostrilich.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess is absent. Mr. Hughes is excused. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Eleven aye, two absent, two excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 158-22, sponsors of the Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution to enter into a multi-year agreement and accept monies from the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services regarding the delinquency prevention program.
Any discussion? Seeing none, with a quick, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill. Mr. Constantine is absent. Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Frisone.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostrilich.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess is absent. Mr. Hughes is excused. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Eleven aye, two absent, two excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Next item is Resolution 159-22, sponsors of the Committee on Rules.
A resolution, I'm sorry, a resolution to amend the 2022 capital improvement program and operating budget to provide funding for renovations to the loading dock at the county office building.
Any discussion? Seeing none, with a quick, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo. Ms. Pratt is excused. Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill. Mr. Constantine is absent. Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostrich.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess is absent. Mr. Hughes is excused. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski.
Thank the manager for his attention to this. This has been an ongoing thing with the loading dock out back. It's on safe condition. I vote aye.
Eleven aye, two absent, two excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Next item is Resolution 160-22, sponsors of Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution authorizing the county manager to enter into a multi-year agreement with St. Peter's Health Partners for laboratory services at the Glendale Nursing Home.
Any discussion? Seeing over the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo. Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill. Mr. Constantine is absent. Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostrich.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess is absent. Mr. Hughes is excused. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Eleven aye, two absent, two excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 161-22, sponsors of Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution to enter into a multi-year agreement with the New York State Department of Health and to accept monies for the Children and Youth with Special Healthcare Needs Program.
Any discussion? Seeing over the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo. Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill. Mr. Constantine is absent. Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostrich.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess is absent. Mr. Hughes is excused. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Eleven aye, two absent, two excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 162-22, sponsors of Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution to enter into a multi-year agreement with the New York State Department of Health and to accept monies for the Healthy Neighborhoods Preventative Health Cornerstones Program.
Any discussion? Seeing over the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo. Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill. Mr. Constantine is absent. Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Field, I'm sorry, Mr. Frizzoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostrich.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess is absent. Mr. Hughes is excused. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Eleven aye, two absent, two excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 163-22, sponsors Legislative Pratt. The clerk will read.
A resolution confirming the appointment of a person to the position of Director of Library Operations.
Any discussion? Seeing over the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo. Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill. Mr. Constantine is absent. Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostrich.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess is absent. Mr. Hughes is excused. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Eleven aye, two absent, two excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 164-22, sponsors Legislative Frizzoni. The clerk will read.
A resolution regarding the approval of certain digital records as Schenectady County, I'm sorry, a resolution regarding the approval of certain digital records of Schenectady County as the original records of such documents.
Any discussion? Seeing over the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo. Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill. Mr. Constantine is absent. Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostrich.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess is absent. Mr. Hughes is excused. Mr. McDonald. Mr. Jazinski.
Before I vote, I just wanted to thank the county clerk for entertaining us this morning with a tour of her records management facility. The task that lies ahead of her is monumental, to say the least, and is to go a long way out to help her thin out some of the storage we've got over there. I vote aye.
Eleven aye, two absent, two excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 165-22, sponsors Legislative Ostrich. The clerk will read.
A resolution to accept monies from the New York State Office of Children and Family Services to enhance adult protective services.
Any discussion? Seeing over the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo. Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill. Mr. Constantine is absent. Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostrich.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess is absent. Mr. Hughes is excused. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Eleven aye, two absent, two excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 166-22, sponsors Legislative Ostrich. The clerk will read.
A resolution regarding the acceptance of monies from the New York State Office of Temporary Disability Assistance for the Home Energy Assistance Program.
Any discussion? Seeing over the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo. Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill. Mr. Constantine is absent. Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostrich.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess is absent. Mr. Hughes is excused. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Eleven aye, two absent, two excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 167-22, sponsors Legislative Russo. The clerk will read.
A resolution regarding the transfer of county-owned real property in the town of Niskuna to the Land Reutilization Corporation of the Capital Region.
Any discussion? Seeing over the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill. Mr. Constantine is absent. Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostrich.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess is absent. Mr. Hughes is excused. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Eleven aye, two absent, two excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 168-22, sponsors Legislative Paterno. The clerk will read.
A resolution authorizing the implementation and funding of a state Marchiselli Program aid-eligible transportation federal aid project to fully fund the local share of federal and state aid-eligible and ineligible project costs and appropriating funds therefore.
Any discussion? Seeing over the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo. Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill. Mr. Constantine is absent. Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostrich.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess is absent. Mr. Hughes is excused. Mr. McDonald. Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Eleven aye, two absent, two excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 169-22, sponsors Legislative Constantine. The clerk will read.
A resolution authorizing the county manager to enter into an amendment to the collective bargaining agreement with CSEA Local 1000, AFLCIO Local 885, representing the Central Dispatch Unit.
Any discussion? Seeing over the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo. Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill. Mr. Constantine is absent. Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostrich.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess is absent. Mr. Hughes is excused. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Eleven aye, two absent, two excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 170-22, sponsors Legislative Fields. The clerk will read.
A resolution confirming the appointment of a person to the position of Commissioner of the Department of Finance.
Any discussion? Legislative Fields.
Mr. Chair, I would like to just speak a few words on this particular resolution tonight. And I start by saying farewell to the former commissioner, John McPhillips, who is departing with us and no longer will endure the pleasure of the type of meeting that we have here during the county, and also the interaction that you've had over the last couple of years. So we wish you well in your new adventure, and thank you for your service that you've given to us. With that, we are, tonight, we are voting on a resolution tonight, well, we hope to vote on a resolution tonight that will actually make the appointment of Jackie Falatiko to this new office, this office of the, really not new, but the Department of Finance, the Commissioner of Finance, and I can tell you that Jackie's been a wonderful person. I've known her for quite some time. She's been with this county or with the, you know, local governments for 13 years, but a large portion of that right here in Schenectady County. We've seen you snake your way through the various areas of management here, and has served yourself well. You've worked yourself well in the manager's office, where you kind of started, and you continued, where you are presently right now. And you're certainly well-suited for this next task just before us today, and I think that you will do well. I would like to say that, you know, your parents, I guess, are here, is that true? And your husband is here, so you've got a good daughter, a good wife, and we have a good employee, and we're thankful for her task and the things that she's done for us over the many years, and I welcome you to the new position. I hope all our members here would actually be encouraged to vote for Jackie to take on the oversight responsibility, continuing with the county budget process, dealing with the capital, dealing with the operating budget, and very other numerous responsibilities, tax levies, and so forth with the county, and I wish you well, and thank you very much, and I have my support. So with that, when you get to the roll, I vote aye.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing over the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo. Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill. Mr. Constantine is absent. Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostrich.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess is absent. Mr. Hughes is excused. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski.
Well, pardon my voting. I just wanted to thank John McPhillips for his many years of service to us. Those of you who may know, he came to us battle-tested from Albany County politics, and thought this was like Nirvana in Schenectady County. Still can't believe that we actually get things done here, but we thank him for so many years of service, and we welcome Jackie to a new role in our team, and I vote aye.
Eleven aye, two absent.
Any comments? At this time, I would like to recognize Legislative Fields for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I would like to move, I'm sorry, that proposed local law C be lifted from the table. As was discussed in our meeting last month, this local law provides for a leasing of property on the SUNY Schenectady campus to Northeast Rush LLC for a soccer facility.
Thank you, sir. Second?
Second.
Legislative Gata, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Proposed local laws listed from the table. Our next item is Resolution 171-22, sponsors of the Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution adopting local law C of 2022.
Any discussion? Seeing over the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt is excused. Mr. McGill. Mr. Constantine is absent. Ms. Gata.
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterno.
Aye.
Ms. Ostrich.
Yes.
Ms. Valano.
Yes.
Mr. Hess is absent. Mr. Hughes is excused. Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Mr. Jazinski.
Aye.
Eleven aye, two absent, two excused.
Thank you. The resolution has passed, and I believe that concludes our position for this regular meeting of the county legislature. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I would like to say something real quick. Sure you guys are all expecting this, but I just feel like what happened at the meeting, filling Legislative McGarry's seat, needs to be addressed.
Mr. Cuomo, you're really out of order, because the meeting is over with, and we've entertained a motion to adjourn, and we have a second. So, all in favor, indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
And the legislature stand adjourned. Thank you all.